Recording in progress.
You should give the attendees too, Laura.
Okay. Oh, great. Yes. Thank you. Okay. Ready to get started? Hello, my name is Laura Dickey and I would like to welcome you to the Westford League of Women Voters Annual Town Meeting Preview. Our goal tonight is to give voters an overview of the articles on the annual town meeting warrant. So they are better prepared to attend annual town meeting on Saturday, March 25th. This event is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on YouTube. Thanks to Westford Cat. Just want to tell you a few things about the league. The League of Women Voters encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League is a nonpartisan political organization and does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. You can learn more at l w v dot westford dot org. Our website also has a series of short videos explaining various aspects of town meeting, as well as our newly updated guide to town meeting booklet. Tonight, our format will be to follow the articles in the order that they are listed in the warrant. They'll also be shared up on the screen so you can see them. We will have each article be explained by a town official. And they'll follow along. If you have questions, you'll see a Q and A button at the bottom of your screen usually in Zoom. So feel free to ask a question on really anything. We'll try to get you an answer. I'll continue to monitor it that and the chat and try to get you answers to your questions. It's a great chance to to learn more about the articles and also just about how town meeting works in case you had any questions about that. And along those lines, I would like to introduce Angela Harkness, our town moderator, who will give us some information about the logistics of annual town meeting. Angela?
Sure. Thank you so much, Laura, and thank you to the League for continually hosting this informative session for us. So for those who don't know, town meeting is the legislative body of our form of government. And what that means is that town meeting votes on the budget and also on various rules and regulations that we live by here in Westford. So it's very important for people to attend and participate. And if you're a registered voter in Westford, you can attend town meeting and speak and vote. And you don't have to do either. You can just attend, but if you're going to be there, you may as well vote at least. You can come to town meeting even if you don't know anything about the articles that are being presented. You can sit there and listen to the presentations and be able to gather enough information to make an informed decision and vote on each one. So a little bit about the logistics, town meeting is going to be held this year on March 25th. So that's a week from this Saturday. It'll start at 10 a.m. And it's going to be held at the Westford Academy Gymnasium. This will be our second time in that new location for us. And when you get there, there'll be plenty of parking and you should arrive a little bit early, 15 minutes to a half hour early to make sure you get yourself parked and checked in with the tellers at town meeting. Once you arrive at the gymnasium, the tellers will check you in against the voter list and give you a clicker, which is an electronic vote tabulator that we'll use for many of the votes that we take. We will start with the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of various articles that are routine in nature or repeat each year. So there's no real need to take time with them separately. We'll be efficient as we can and lump those together and vote on them as one. Before we vote on them, however, we'll list them. So that if anyone does have a question about a particular article on the consent agenda, they can simply say hold and we will pull that article out of the consent agenda and allow the person who's raised the hold to either ask their question or make their comment and vote on that separately. Once the consent agenda is done, we'll just move from article to article in order with the presentations being made by the proponents and questions asked and comments made and votes taken for each one. We will go from 10 a.m. until about noon, at which time we'll break for lunch. And we have the Say Cheese food truck that's going to be right outside the door at Westford Academy, providing lunch sandwiches for those who'd like to to avail themselves of that. You can also leave and come back if you wish, go somewhere else, go home and be back by 1:15. At 1:15, we'll start again and we will continue until we're finished or until about 5 o'clock. Hopefully we'll finish by then. If by chance we don't, then there will be another session that starts at 7 p.m. on Monday evening, but we will try our best to get finished on Saturday. Couple of important things. There is free transportation to and from the meeting, which any Westford resident can avail themselves of. And you can do that by registering in advance at the Cameron Senior Center. You can see a link to that registration form on the town moderators webpage of the Westford, Town of Westford website. We also have free childcare onsite this year. And again, you can pre-register for that and you have to pre-register for both of these things. The pre-registration for the free childcare is at the Westford Recreation Department's webpage. Or again, you can find a link to that on the town moderators page of the Westford website. And I hope people will make some time in their day to attend. It's important and informative and can be a lot of fun as well. So hope to see everybody there.
Thank you. That was a lot of great information. So looking forward to trying to get that new space again. So it worked out pretty well last time, I think. Great. So now we're going to start going through the warrant articles. Remember, please put any questions you have in the Q and A window. We'll try to get them answered. Um, we'll start with Article One, which is accept town reports. This is on the consent agenda. It's something that happens every year, just to accept them. So I'm going to skip over the consent agenda once again, unless you have a question or would like additional information about it. Article Two is to approve fiscal year 2023 budget supplemental appropriations. And there's a few motions in here. I'm gonna start with the 850,532. So could Chief Targ talk to the Fire and Personnel Services and also maybe also cover the ambulance enterprise expenses that are at the bottom? So we'll cover both of your related topics and just tell us what those are for. If Chief Targ is here, if he's not. Oh, here he is.
I think I'm here.
You are.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. The $75,000 for personal service. We started out the year rough where we had three injured on duties. We had one in the fire academy and we had two open positions that we had not filled. We don't fill 100%, but we do fill to 10. Our staffing normally is 11 and we drop down one before we start to fill it in overtime. We, with those open positions and then coming into the springtime, we have three injured on duties and two that are out of medicals and three pending retirements at this time. And we have two that are starting the fire academy, which is about nine weeks long. So $75,000 is just a supplement for overtime on the fire side.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. And then, yeah, ambulance enterprise?
Yes. We, this is for the new station on Boston Road. We have adequate furnishings for the rooms and stuff like that. We have people with the shortfall of personnel. We have them rotating between stations sometimes. It is basically a locker. We originally were going to get what matched the the furniture that was in there. It was going to be started at $12,000. It went up to around $18,000 after we look at the price due to the whole pandemic shortage and stuff. And it was tough getting a quote. So we just went with the basic U-line locker for the people to store their equipment in when they moved out of the station and they're working on one of the substations. So they don't have to brought in the car or take it with them where they're only going to be gone for a couple of weeks. So that's all that is. It's just a supplement we have for storage.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm gonna move on now to the snow and ice line item as well as the water enterprise expenses. And Steve Cronin, the Director of Public Works, I believe is going to speak to these two items.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Yep. So we're in the midst of snow and ice season. We just had a significant storm the past couple of days. We've already expended the initial 400,000 that we typically budget for snow and ice and we've started using the supplemental 400,000 that we, that's listed here in the warrant. So you know, snow and ice season isn't over, obviously. And you know, we could incur some additional expenses between now and the end of the snow and ice season. As far as the water enterprise budget goes, we've seen a dramatic increase in the cost of our treatment chemicals at our water treatment plants. Collectively, we've seen a 56% increase in chemical costs for this year, driven primarily by an increase in potassium hydroxide, which is the chemical that we use most at our treatment plant. So this ask is to basically cover the cost of increase. The cost increases for chemicals that we're experiencing in this current year.
Okay. Good to, thank you. And then I'll have Dan O'Donnell, our Finance Director, speak to the recycling expenses and the OPEB transfers.
Sure. So we're looking for $20,000 for the recycling budget. Basically, last year in FY22, we brought in $39,000 in revenue from the sale of our recycled materials. Market's in a complete 180 because cardboard and mixed paper crashed. So this year we're on track to pay about 125,000 to pay for the processing of those materials. But this 20,000 is just a supplemental for the budget. We'll also be requesting that the Select Board and Finance Committee consider a transfer from the solid waste budget to the recycling budget and somewhere around the range of 100, 105,000 in May or June. For the OPEBs, this is something common that we do. The OPEBs are the the health insurance and life insurance for the retirees for Westford. Basically, we have a million dollars budget within the operating budget and this 355,000 is there to supplement. So we can meet the Select Board policy for FY24 with our OPEB funding.
Great. Thank you. I don't see any questions about any of those items. So I'm going to move on to Article Three, which is to appropriate for perchlorate expenses. And Eric Heidemann, our Assistant Town Manager, is going to tell us about this.
Everybody, sorry about that. Was having some technical difficulties. So this is our annual article that you've may have seen on the warrant in the past. This is for our continued perchlorate mitigation efforts that happened during the construction of the highway garage back in approximately 2004, 2005. Kristin and I are actually going to be meeting with our LSP here in the coming weeks and to get up to speed on where things are and to ensure we're working towards eventual permanent closure of the site. Once we ensure that all of the drinking water is safe for our residents. So this is just our water testing sampling program and our cost for our licensed site professional. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
My only one was what is an LSP? But you just answered it. So thank you. Great. Yeah, this definitely comes up every year. The amount keeps going down. So, um. I don't see any questions. So we're going to move on to Article Four, which is to appropriate opioid settlement funds. And our town manager, Kristin Last, is going to speak to this.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to introduce myself. Kristin Last, Town Manager for the Town of Westford. Thank you, everyone, for being so welcoming. I look forward to seeing a lot of you at town meeting on March 25th. The Town of Westford entered into a settlement agreement related to opioids and opioid litigation. And they were awarded a sum of money totaling $618,000 approximately between now and 2038. As of today's date, we have received almost $130,000. The exact amount is in the warrant article. And this article would appropriate those dollars to allow for the opioid task force that was set up by the previous town manager to recommend projects and procedures to the Select Board and then the Select Board to enter into those projects and procedures moving forward to mitigate the effects of opioids in the community.
Great. So these go into the general fund then, or? And then can be used or?
Dan, could you elaborate on how the mechanism for the funds would be used?
Sure. So according to Mass General Settlement Proceeds, our general fund revenue, therefore, we're going to appropriate the funds into a special account, basically that we can carry over year to year. So that we know that the opioid funds are used for the intended purpose. We do have to report back on the usage back to the state on this. So we want to make sure those funds are separated.
Excellent. Thank you. Um. We had one question asking whether or not we had to approve receiving, whether or not town meeting has to approve receiving such funds. Is this, is that what we're voting on here is to receive them or have we already received them?
The funds have been received and they are on account. This is to appropriate the funds for certain projects and to allow the Select Board to appropriate those funds.
Okay. So town meeting didn't have to approve receiving them. Okay. Hope that answers the um, question. Um, okay. Well, if there's a follow-up, I'll bring it, bring it back to you guys. Okay. So Article Five is approve capital appropriations. There are a lot. So we're kind of going to go in order here. Start with Mike Wells, our Director of Technology and talking about the computer replacements listed first.
Yep. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So yes, we have three capital requests this year. The first two are regular annual things. The first one is to continue the process of keeping our town computer, desktop computers and laptops up to date. We replace a certain number each year. The second is the same thing for the schools, much larger number because of course we do the one-to-one computers for the students in the middle schools and the high schools now. So this includes 800 Chromebooks and a load of laptop replacements for the faculty staff. And then the third item is 100,000 for upgrades to our servers and storage, which is another sort of continuous process we run to keep our server backend systems in good health. We renew them periodically.
Great. Thank you. Um, next is architectural and engineering for the fire department station four at NavNas Edition. Tom Mahana, the Chair of the Permanent Town Building Committee, speak to this.
I don't see Tom Mahana.
Oh, Tom, okay. Can?
And I The fire chief should, the fire chief could speak to it if you wish.
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes, sorry. Yes. Joe's, Chief Targ has raised his hand.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. If you want. We've been working with the Town Building Committee for this. The station's built in 1963. It's just over 2,000 square feet. We didn't have a full-time staff in it till probably 1990s somewhere. The station wasn't designed for full-time staff. It's, we updated a lot of stuff. The only bathroom is on the apparatus floor. It's not near the living quarters that you have to walk through. This is a study. Tom could explain it better, but we do have a presentation if needed for town meeting to show the condition of the station. But we'll be looking with this might to figure out, do we expand the building and rehab it? Do we raise the building and rebuild it? Or do we look at what our options are? And hopefully to walk away with some concrete plans, architectural drawings that we could bring back to support which direction we want to go. There is a plot of land. It is big enough to expand a little bit. It's all town land. It's around it. We're not sure that that's the best idea, but this 300,000 will hopefully take us to the point where we can come back in a year or two with plans to show how we're going to proceed.
Great. Thank you for coming in on that. Um, next up is the, for the schools, there's a set of four capital requests. Jeff Goodwin, our Facilities Director, will speak to this. Tell us what the needs are.
Good evening. Yeah. So the first appropriation here for 95,000 for the Stony Brook Middle School, front entry patio replacement. For anyone who's been by the school in recent months, you can see the concrete patio in front of the school has been deteriorating rapidly. The road salt that we use during the winter months eats apart the concrete pretty badly. There's been a lot of patchwork repairs done to it over the years. And this quote for 95,000 is to replace that front patio with an asphalt patio that will hold up much better to the rigors of de-icing during the winter months. The next one down, NavNas at Parking Lot and Walking Path Improvements. This was an initiative brought on by my predecessor, Paul Fox, to address some of the parking lot issues at the NavNas at Elementary School, as well as some of the deteriorating walkway between NavNas and Pauley Way. We've been working with Gale Associates on a design for that project. And I'm working alongside Steve Cronin and the Engineering Department to refine that design a little bit. And that number is based on the estimate provided by Gale Associates. The next one down, the $34,000 is to replace our wide area mower that the Facilities Department uses to cut the vast amount of acreage that they have to cover between the 10 schools. And the next one down for the electric vehicle for the Facilities Department is to provide an electric vehicle for the custodial supervisor to drive between the 10 school buildings and some of the town buildings on a daily basis.
Great. Thank you. I don't see any questions. So we'll move on to the last set in this chart and have Steve Cronin, who is our Director of Public Works, speak in about however, and however much detail you would like about the various appropriations that you're requesting here.
Thank you. I'm going to defer to Paul Starrett, our Town Engineer on the Boston Road and Stony Brook Bridge Replacement Project.
So Paul Starrett, Town Engineer, the Boston Road Reconstruction Project, which we're partnering with our, with the regional planners at NAMCOG and Mass DOT to complete this project. They're come, they've come up with $12 million to construct this, very competitive dollars, but we were able to secure those for the town. But $500,000 that we're asking for in this capital appropriation will pay for all the non-participating items, those things which don't fit within the four corners of Mass DOT's mission to make travel safer and more efficient. Those things like land acquisition, paying and acquiring for easements. And, and then also things like landscaping, relocating walls, things that, that the state won't pay for. That's for Boston Road. Any questions on that?
What's the timeframe for the buy? I know this has come up lots of times before, but what is the, is there, is it coming up soon or not quite yet?
So we, we are, their state is planning to advertise this late in the 24 fiscal year. But it is very unlikely that a contractor is going to want to mobilize and do any work during, in the end of that construction season. So we, we, we're thinking that we'll see more activity in the spring of 25 in that, and it'll be for two construction seasons. So we anticipate by the end of '26, it will be significantly completed.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any other questions on that one.
Stony Brook Bridge Relocation Consultant. We have a property that is located between the Stony Brook Bridge on Stony Brook Road and the railroad trussel. And during construction, the Stony Brook Bridge, which is being rehabilitated, will not, will, the, the fire and police will not have access to the, to the one property. And so the state, again, we were able to get funding from Mass DOT to do this rehabilitation for it, for a couple of million dollars. But the town is responsible, just like in Boston Road, to take care of the property acquisitions or the land rights. And that will involve relocating the, the family that lives at this one property. And we have to follow the Uniform Relocation Act, which is very, very complicated and very detailed. So we'll, we'll need a consultant to tell us how much we need to budget for the actual relocation. A budget that will satisfy the minutia of details that goes into the Uniform Relocation Act. And then make sure that we're in compliance throughout the project for the relocation itself.
Wow.
Those are the two, those are the two engineering requests. We have another one coming up later in the, in the capital acquisition.
Okay. Thank you. I will finish up this chart and then this, this batch of them, and then we'll get to the additional motions. So Steve, do you want to speak to the vehicle replacements?
Yes, thank you. So the next three, the, the next three requests are for the Highway Department totaling $405,000 for the replacement of Highway Department fleet vehicles. You know, the, the first request for 65,000 is to replace a three-quarter ton Chevy Silverado truck. This is truck number two, primarily used by our Highway Operations Supervisor. Significant corrosion on this vehicle. It's been in service for quite a while. Has over 135,000 miles. It certainly reached the end of its useful life. The next vehicle request is for 80,000 to replace a one-ton dump truck. This is truck number 10. It is a 2008 Chevy 2500 HD dump body with plow. This is a primary frontline vehicle that we use on a daily basis and also for snow and ice. Currently has 121,894 miles. The next vehicle is a six-wheel dump truck. The replacement vehicle has been estimated to cost 260,000. This is truck number 32. It's a 2000 International six-wheel dump truck with a sander body, plow and wing plow. This truck has significant corrosion and a hole in the firewall, which is a significant safety concern. We'll be replacing this with a swap loader vehicle, which has a significant amount of flexibility. It can be used for more than just snow and ice operations. Next, we have 450,000 for the Abbott School Wastewater Treatment Plant Tank Rehabilitation. We've, we conducted a conditional assessment of all the wastewater treatment facilities a number of years ago. We've been incrementally, incrementally conducting upgrades to these facilities. This is the third such upgrade. We've completed upgrades at both Westford Academy and Blanchett School. This is for rehabilitation of the steel tanks at the facility, as well as improvements to, safety improvements at the facility. Next up, we have the Parks and Grounds Department. Again, the vehicle replacement here in the amount of 65,000. This is to replace truck number 45, which is primarily used by our Parks Operations Supervisor. It's a Chevy 2500 HD with plow, has 93, over 93,000 miles on it. And again, significant corrosion and has reached the end of its useful life. Uh, and again, significant corrosion uh and has reached the end of its useful life.
Hi, I don't see any questions on those, um, it looks like there's, um, would you or um Mark Warren, Water Supervisor, like to speak to the appropriations from the Water Enterprise Department?
I'll speak to those. Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so uh Water Enterprise is four requests, uh first one is a vehicle replacement uh for a four by four utility body truck with plow. Um, once again, frontline vehicle with significant corrosion, it's reached the end of its uh useful life. Uh, so we'll be replacing uh this vehicle in kind. Next up is uh sixty five thousand to replace uh the express van that we have, that's primarily utilized by our meter reader uh who performs meter reading and meter replacement functions. Uh, we're gonna be replacing this van actually with an electric um electric vehicle. Um, and we've specified a Ford E-Transit electric cargo van for that. Uh, next up is uh hundred and fifty thousand for a pilot study for PFOS treatment. Uh, PFOS are uh commonly referred to as forever chemicals and have been recently uh identified by Mast DEO, Mast DEP, um, and EPA rather, um for uh their health effects. Um, so this study is basically to um perform a number of functions, um, you know, to determine um what we're gonna have to do for long-term treatment to remove PFOS from our drinking water. Uh, and lastly, we have eighty thousand dollars for uh supplemental appropriation for the Depot Street wall replacement. Uh, this is an ongoing project that we've been working on for the last year or so. Uh, this eighty thousand dollars is basically to um is for uh additional costs for motor uh BFD replacement and uh new piping for the uh the new wealth.
Okay. And this, since this is all coming from Water Enterprises, it's money that's raised from the people who pay for water, I believe.
Correct, this is entirely funded by water rates and won't come from uh the general funds.
Great, thank you, I don't see any questions on that section, um, we're going to move to one um which I either you or Paul can speak to, um, we're we're gonna take a mix of funding, it looks like from free cash, sale of real estate and the Stormwater Enterprise retained earnings to fund a couple of different capital requests, so um would you or Paul like to talk to these?
I think Paul's pre- prepared to speak to these.
Okay, okay.
Is this the uh the the Town Hall Parking Lot, is that what we're?
Yes.
Yes.
Town Hall Park, yeah, sorry, Town Hall Parking Lot.
Right.
First, yes, yes.
So the the uh previous town manager identified this as a a priority to uh in- increased parking at Town Hall, and so we have begun the design process and uh uh hopefully we'll be appropriating enough money to construct thirty four spaces adjacent to Town Hall.
Great, and this is independent of the project happening at fifty one Main Street, this is a separate project.
Yes, they are, they're, they are uh completely independent.
Great, thank you, and then there's a culvert replacement on Acton Road?
Yes, so we're. I'll speak, go ahead, go ahead, no, go ahead, Steve, thank you. So uh this is for a hundred and sixty five thousand, so the town, we conducted a conditional assessment of all of our culverts throughout town. Um, they identif- this has been identified as a high priority culvert replacement on Acton Road. Um, approximately a hundred and fifty feet south of Greenwood Road. Uh, so this is for design uh primarily for the replacement, and we'll be back with a supplemental funding requested at a further town meeting.
Okay. Um, thank you, I don't see any specific, any questions on these items specifically, so we will move back to Chief Tark to talk about the request for a tower truck. Curious to know what that is, that's cool.
Town, the land truck we currently have is two thousand and two, um, it does get tested annually, um non-destructive test, as we call it, every every five years and the um usually there's a shadow in the parking lot when they're done with it of all the rust that they take off of it. Um, we have separation of the frame where the uh, it's a seat double C frame and there's gaps in there, so we we got water in there, um, the salt gets in there. Um, it it's, we had a major um environmental problem with it, uh at one of the Westford Hill sites, they were doing some training down there in a hydraulic line, let go, it was uh luckily the town insurance covered it, it cost quite a bit to fix it. Um, the problem is too, it is, it takes us two years to get this truck built um with the supply chain issues, as they tell us, and everything.
Oh wow.
So if we appropriate now, we we won't see it in March, we won't see it for two years, probably two years in the summertime, realistically, is what we're being told. Um, this particular truck is a sea grave, which we we've been buying E ones, which have aluminum and stainless steel in them, this one is probably the most stainless steel that you can get in a um land truck or or fire truck, which we're hoping to um preserve it a little bit better with the um the weather and the road conditions we have around here.
Okay, great, thank you. I don't see any questions on that, um, the third motion. Um, and I should note that these are all, that these additional ones here are all two-thirds majority vote required, whereas the initial set was a majority vote. Um, this, I believe, is about the HVAC at Cameron Senior Center, but I believe this is going to be dismissed. Um, could um Jeff speak to why this is getting dismissed, just briefly?
Yep, um, so uh we recently went out to um bids uh for the job and unfortunately, we received no bids um at this time, uh so we really don't have any fresh um you know, ask for an appropriation to go to town meeting with, so um, we proposed that select board the other night that we'd like to go back out to bid with a a slightly different bid package um in the upcoming months and potentially come back to the fall town meeting with bids in hand.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, um, the, so the fourth motion then is for two million dollars for um Boston Road Reconstruction, so uh Paul, I assume, will speak to that again?
Oh, we're we're gonna do Steve on this one.
Thank you, Paul, as Paul mentioned, we have a number of non-participating items on the Boston Road Project. Uh, water main replacement is considered a non-participating item, so this two billion dollars is the water department's uh portion of the Boston Road Project, that will go towards replacing the existing water main on Boston Road with a twelve-inch ductile iron water main that uh will hopefully last us as long as the, as the road does.
Great, and no questions, so um Steve, are you gonna speak to the fifth motion for the Francis Hill Water Storage Tank?
Yes, thank you, so uh the fifth motion is uh for one million forty five thousand dollars to uh rehabilitate the Francis Hill Water Storage Tank. Uh, this storage tank was uh constructed in nineteen seventy, uh has a total storage volume of of uh one point two six million gallons. Um, we inspect our storage tanks periodically, um, this tank's been re- rehabilitated uh last in two thousand and two. Uh, so we'll be performing a number of uh functions in the rehabilitation, including power washing and recoating uh the entire exterior, sandblasting and recoating all the interior surfaces. Uh, replacing the roof vent, completing safety improvements to uh both the ladder and the roof. Uh, installing a new uh mixing system for water quality purposes. Um, making minor repairs to the tank foundation and and valve vault and storing a, installing a uh perimeter fence at the site uh as required by Mast DEP. Um, so we've conducted a number of uh tank rehabilitations over the past couple of years, uh and this is just the next one.
Sounds good. And are you also going to speak to the sixth motion then about the replacement of the Pond Brook Culvert?
Yes, thank you, so uh once again, these were two culverts that were identified in the townwide culvert assessment. Uh, we've recently completed design on these two projects and we're ready for the construction phase uh which will be, which will be completed over the course of the next construction season, so this is um this ask is to uh replace those two culverts.
Great, so they're a little further along in the process than the Acton Road one.
Yes.
Okay, and um as you're, if you're following along on the warrant, you can see that the recommendations of the various boards that as relates to these um requests, that they all were are recommended unanimously. Um, the one that wasn't, I think, being dismissed, so I don't see, thank you everyone for that, those great detailed um descriptions of the um requests. I don't see any other questions, so we're gonna move on to Article Six. Appropriate funding for the construction of a new municipal building located at fifty one Main Street. And I believe we have a video that we're going to play tonight, sort of, you get a little sneak peek of um what I believe will also be played at town meeting, presented by Tom Clay, um, Vice Chair of the Select Board. I don't know, I believe Tom is here, yep, there we go.
Good evening. Um, so if the plan's to run the video, um, we can do that, or we can give kind of a a general summary of what's gonna be coming up?
Um, it's up to you, what you, um, whatever you think be.
The the video does a great job of explaining the needs and and also some of the background and the finances, so it's about eight minutes long, if you have that much time.
Um, I think we do, um, yeah, I though that was, those are some of the more detailed um articles, so I think we'll we'll be all right if you'd like to, if you'd like to show it.
Okay, I may have to rely on Mike, who knows where that video is?
Okay. Oh, wait, oh, okay, maybe we'll.
Eric, do you have access to that?
Are we talking about the one on the, I see one on the fifty or PTBC website for, it says play about twenty-five minutes long now, I don't think that's it.
No, that's not it.
I know where it is, it took me a minute to find it, but I know where it is.
I'll also put the link in the chat for those who wish to view it at another time. Oh, okay, so it's available for public viewing already?
Yes, it is.
Oh, wonderful, okay, actually, maybe if that is the
Do you want me to just put the link in the chat and people can view it at another time?
Yeah, let's do that, wait.
This evening?
Yeah, no, I didn't realize, I wasn't sure it was something that was already a- available, I think that would probably be easier for people that they can um follow up directly on it, we can publicize it as well, um.
Okay, I'll do that in a moment.
Great.
Yeah, yeah.
Should I just give a brief uh a brief summary then?
Yes, yes, thank you.
So uh and there'll be, there'll be time for questions, certainly they'll come up and lots of people out there can help me. Um, i- in general, this program was addressed, uh, it began a number of years ago to address a set of needs that included uh providing accessible, um, safe and accessible access for veterans, for the veteran services they receive. Um, a confidential site for people seeking mental health services with our new Mental Health Wellness Coordinator in Westford. Um, also, we were looking for a place to have a safe and sustainable uh and appropriate place for our IT group. Uh, the IT group is currently housed in a, in a facility that's really substandard. Uh, both in terms of the way that uh that the workers there need to, need to live, which is unfortunate. But also, it's not a good place for the IT infrastructure to exist for our town. Um, so it was really a a set of needs uh that are urgent, uh that need to be addressed, that came together to form the core of this. Um, the project has been uh in the works for a number of years, there've been more than a hundred public meetings uh around this uh event, number of events where people have sought input, so a lot of community uh input has gone into this and a lot of thoughtful uh work by a lot of committees have gone into considering the different options and coming up with this as the best recommendation. Um, the total is twelve million four hundred thousand uh for this project, that's the most updated estimate that we have. Um, that uh is consistent with the cost for municipal buildings at this time, we've seen this cost go up consistently over the past several years and we expect it would continue to go up from here, uh if we're not able to make this commitment at this time as a town. Um, it's a uh, so it's a, it's an important set of needs that we're addressing here. Uh, I think it's the right time to do it because it's not gonna get cheaper to address it. And I think it's been a thoughtful community conversation to to place it in the location that it is and scale it in the way that it is. The other important need that this addresses is uh is access to the democratic process here in town. If you've been to select board meetings that are important and of interest to the public, uh more than half the people might be out in the hallway, that's not an ideal way to participate. Uh, this new facility will be fully equipped for virtual presentations, but uh we really believe that there's a high amount of value in face-to-face presence in these meetings, we want to make sure that the space is available and appropriate for um, you know, great participation from the public in a thriving, growing community like Westford. Um, so we we believe this is the the best uh thoughtful solution. It's it's a, it's a price that's only gonna go up from here and it's centered around a bunch of really critical needs for our residents, so we uh we will ask uh everyone to please support this building. It really solves a, an important problem for the town and I think does it in the right way at, at really the best cost that's available.
Great, thank you. Um, I'm not seeing any specific questions on this right now, um, but everyone should have seen in the chat, um, a link was shared to the website where the videos are available, so you can follow up to uh get more information and learn about the building, so thank you, Tom, for telling us about it.
Yeah, no problem, Lauren, and I will mention that there are also some videos on the fifty one Main Street of the different town departments that will be uh housed in the new building in their own words, sort of explaining the needs, so Mike Wells does a terrific job explaining the needs for the IT group, for example. Uh, if you will go to that website, they can hear in much more eloquent uh words than I have, uh people who are living every day with the current situation can help uh help everyone visualize what they're going through and how much better this will be for the residents that they serve.
Okay, thank you, uh, we do have a question or a request, really, to see the updated version of the excluded debt history and forecast chart that um Dan and Christine presented at the special town meeting last October. Um, I don't know if anyone has access to that right now, or if not, um, to have it ready for annual town meeting. And um the con- the question, the attendee commented that as they recalled, the chart showed taxpayers funding about three million per year, but with new projects, the requests may increase it to over four million a year, and how much capacity is left to fund projects without a dramatic property tax increase?
Um, so, um, we can say the videos do cover that, um, I'm not sure if Dan readily has the information available, but everything is on the website right now. Um, and we can certainly explain that at town meeting, Dan, do you want to show that now, or would you prefer to hold off for the website?
Uh, it's probably better for the uh the website, and I know Christine did send some slides to IT for the actual town meeting, if there are questions there as well, but it it's all in the video as well.
I think it's important, important, but maybe, Dan, you could just give us some, just a quick verbal summary, though, of how this, even with the new projects that we have forecasted, it stays roughly at historic levels of what individual residents would pay.
Uh, yeah, so, I mean, in FY twenty-two, the median house is paying about three hundred and sixty-two dollars in excluded debt. Um, and FY twenty-seven, when the library comes on, we're estimating about three hundred and eighty dollars per house in excluded debt, so and, you know, back in the early two thousands when we had all the new schools being built, you know, it was more like nine hundred dollars per household at that time, so we still have a relatively low um, excluded debt as a percentage of the each tax bill uh compared to our historical um amounts, so and just for reference, we're estimating that the F twenty-one Main Street building will be about eighty-four dollars on the median house at assessed at six hundred and sixty thousand five hundred dollars. And we think the Blanchard roof will be about twenty-five dollars starting at FY twenty-five in that same house.
Ah, okay, thank you. I believe that answers the question, and if um if there are any follow-ups, I'll circle back to it, um. Let's see, now we are up to, well, Dan kind of uh previewed Article Seven. Appropriate funding for the Lloyd G Blanchard MSBA roof replacement. Um, Jeff Goodwin, our Facilities Director, can you tell us about this?
Okay, um, the uh Blanchard Middle School um was built in nineteen ninety-two. Uh, it's over a hundred and nine thousand square feet, so it's our third biggest school building in town. Um, the existing membrane roof is original to the building and it's beyond its functional life. Uh, in recent years, the building's been plagued by roof leaks, um uh and if they continue to go unchecked, they can cause irreparable damage to the building and the interior finishes of the building. Uh, and if they continue to go unchecked, they can cause irreparable damage to the building and the interior finishes of the building. Um, Westford Public Schools have been fortunate enough to be accepted into the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program, which actually has since been put on pause, so we were lucky that we got in when we did. Uh, this means that the town will be eligible for up to forty-eight point zero five percent reimbursement for all eligible construction costs. The total project budget is six million four hundred and twenty-five thousand and two point nine million, uh, two point nine four nine oh four is eligible for reimbursement, so the total estimated cost to the town after reimbursement is three million four eighty-four, one thirty-nine.
Great. Oh, someone asked, could we have the warrant, um, shared again? Um, it is not visible at the moment. Ah, thank you. Um, okay, I don't think that was a question on that article, but just to get the, the warrant back up, so thank you. So now we're going to move on to, uh, next set of, um, well, I think it's one article for community preservation funds. So Article Eight is to approve community preservation committee recommendations, so, um, is Kathleen Healy here? I don't.
So Laura, I didn't see anybody from the CPA on the, uh, in the attendees, so I'm happy to have her on these, that helps.
I'm sure, yeah, thank you.
Excellent, so just going through the list real quick, um, we have three hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and forty-five as our ten percent allocation to community housing reserve. We have that just about every year. Again, we have a hundred and ninety thousand dollar transfer to Conservation Trust, that's the annual amount they usually request to, uh, purchase property when it comes up for sale. Um, we have three hundred and twelve thousand to Affordable Housing Trust. Again, the Affordable Housing Trust can, uh, purchase, uh, housing, uh, off-cycle town meeting if they have a reserve available to go. Uh, we have a hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred for the, uh, design for the Stony Brook Track and the athletic courts. Um, that the tracks are warped and, uh, the track, the courts are in very poor shape, so this is the first step to replacing those. Uh, we have four hundred thousand for the Jack Wallace test and basketball court improvements. Uh, last year we approved, uh, forty thousand from CPAs for the design. This is to finish the project. Uh, we have twenty-five thousand for the Forge softball fields. We actually appropriated twenty-five thousand from CPA, uh, a few years ago for the, the baseball fields, but now we just want to tackle both projects at once to get a little better deal on the, uh, for, uh, installing both dugout projects. Uh, we have a hundred and eighty thousand for, uh, Forge Beach and the Go-That, uh, Playground Sun Trade Structures. Uh, these are removable structures that can, uh, be stored at the Highway Department, uh, during the off-season. Then we have forty-five thousand for the Parkville Schoolhouse Window Restoration Project. Uh, we actually appropriated money for the roof, uh, last year. However, the state, uh, decided to, uh, send us appropriation to cover that, so we closed out the roof money and now they're, uh, looking for money for the windows. And then we have three thousand dollars for the, uh, restoration of an antique snow roller, which used to, used to, uh, plow down the snow back before cars were prevalent, prevalent in town, so, so that project. Now we have a second motion up here, um, for the Meadowbrook Farm Well and the Meadowbrook Farm, uh, Food and Security and State Sustainability Project. Um. Not sure if there's anybody here to speak to that in attendance, but basically this was to install a well at the, at the farm.
Yeah, no, I don't see, yeah, if you could, if you could just describe it, yeah, I don't see, um, Bob here.
Sure, so, and then on a Tuesday, we decided, uh, during the motions being to break this out as a separate article because there were some concerns about the town's liability with installing the well, uh, so we thought it'd be easier to break this out, so we can discuss it separately from rest of the motion. And then lastly, uh, the third motion, we have a million dollars supplemental for the, uh, the, uh, housing project at thirty-five Town, uh, Farm Road. Um, this is a project we're doing with Choice and David Edison. A couple of years ago, we appropriated two million dollars already for this project, and because of the, uh, the increased cost of instruction, uh, they're looking for another million dollar, uh, buy-in for, for this project.
Yes, and, uh, I believe David is here tonight. Um, David, did you want to add anything to that? Or I don't see any questions, but if there's anything else you wanted people to know about the project. You're more than welcome to.
Yes, um, if you can hear me, that's great. Um, David Edison, so I'd like just to thank everyone that's in attendance tonight. The great news is, is Wednesday, um, DHCD is coming out for a site visit to visit Town Farm and this new thirty-five unit, uh, senior development that we're proposing. And what this will do is this million-dollar request is because that final application to the state to start the permitting process had a one point seven million dollar gap. And, um, this, um, request and funding this request will allow this project to actually move forward. We had, um, let the, let the state know that the gap would be filled seven hundred thousand dollars from our funds and a one million dollar request was being made to CPC in Westford. So it's our hope that they'll come out on Wednesday and we'll be seeing the permitting begin through the zoning board. And it's really exciting and I can't wait for this to start. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate the extra info on it. Um, that is it for the CPC, um, requests from the committee, so, um, don't see any specific questions on any, any of the other things. So we will now move on to Article Nine, to amend the Wage and Classification Plan, which I believe we are the recommendation is to dismiss this article, I assume because there's no amendments needed. Okay, so that's easy. Um, Article Ten, to authorize revolving funds, is on the consent agenda, so um, you can see the list of the funds, um, shown on the warrant there, but, uh, this is something that does come up every year and, um, so, again, remember if you, you know, at town meeting, if you have a question about the consent agenda, you can always ask for a hold on it. But, um, we'll just move on from it now because I don't see any questions. Article Eleven is to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four operating budget. And, um, at town meeting, there will be a sort of a state of the town presentation made. We're not going to do that tonight. Um, but Dan, our Finance Director is going to just give us a brief overview of the budget.
Sure, just high level here, uh, we're happy to, to say that we do have a balanced budget to present to town meeting, which is always great. Uh, in recent weeks, the chairs of the Select Board Finance Committee and, uh, School Committee have been working and meeting together uh, to make final decisions regarding the FY twenty-four budget. Uh, part of the reason for that, uh, the late adjustments is because, uh, we have a new governor this year in Massachusetts and she is given six extra weeks to get the budget out to cities and towns. But where we have a March meeting, it really gives us a tight timeline for that, so, um, so overall, um, the schools have a two point eight nine percent increase. The town departments have a two point six two percent decrease. Uh, however, the overall budget, if you'll, if you've looked at the information, has only gone up one point five percent. That's because we have a lot of debt expiring this year. Uh, basically, we're paying off the notes for the Stony Brook, Christopher Foley and the Miller Schools, so we're, we're seeing that average into that, those increases on the, uh, school and town side. So, uh, after all these months of work, I believe we started the process back in August. We think we have a very good product here for, to bring forward to the town. And, uh, and we look forward to discussing it at town meeting.
Great, thank you, yes, and at town meeting, we will, I, I believe moderator will go through each of the major categories so that if you have holds on them, you can ask questions then, but, um, none right now, so we're going to move on to Articles Well, which is to appropriate Chapter Ninety, Local Transportation Funds for roadway maintenance. This is on the consent agenda, happens every year. Um, we will all, so I'll skip, move on to Article Thirteen, to appropriate funds from the Water Enterprise Other Post-Employment Benefits Stabilization Fund to the Water Enterprise Budget. And Dan, I know this is your favorite thing, OPEV, I think we covered it a little bit before, but.
So, uh, this would be on the consent agenda, but it requires a two-thirds vote, so we want to make sure we have that vote, um. So, um, it basically is just appropriating money from the, uh, Water OPEV account to fund the current year, uh, health and life insurance for the Water Enterprise retirees. Nice model how the, uh, OPEV should work when they're fully funded.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, um, Article Fourteen, authorize the Select Board to accept easements. Um, that is on the consent agenda, I think it's usually pretty non-controversial. Uh, as is Article Fifteen, authorize the Select Board to accept easements on Groton Road. This is also on the consent agenda. So, Article Sixteen, authorize the Select Board to accept easements on Old Lowell Road. Also on the consent agenda, so, um, unless anyone has any questions on those easements, um, they will be voted as part of the consent agenda. Um, now we are moving on to Article Seventeen, uh, authorize the Select Board to accept easements for the Boston Road Reconstruction Project. Um, so I think this is probably a little bit more involved, so either Paul or Steve, would you like to speak to, um, how these differ from the other easements? Uh, Paul has his hand raised, so I guess we'll go Paul.
Sorry, apparently I was putting the timeout there. Uh, so Bos- Boston Road is, uh, uh, does have, uh, a significant number of easements, but in particular, uh, there are several properties that will require, uh, Article Ninety-seven legislation. So the, a capital appropriation will give us the money to, uh, 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 dole out compensation. But the, uh, Article Seventeen will authorize the Select Board, uh, to negotiate and enact and take all of those easements that are necessary.
Ah, okay, but it's still just a majority vote, it's not a two-thirds vote, but, um, okay, so, thank you. Uh, I don't see any, any questions, so, um, Article Eighteen, to change the time of annual town meeting. Um, Angelo, would you like to tell us about this request?
Sure, so, um, during the pandemic, when we had our meetings outside, uh, one of the things we did would, to try and make them more efficient, was start earlier at nine AM. And it was so successful that, um, I felt that it would be a good thing to do on a regular basis. Town Council tells me that even though we have a bylaw that specifies, uh, when we are to start town meeting, that the Select Board has the authority to do this. But, um, having a new, a change to the bylaw in place that specifies nine AM uh, will, will help for planning purposes, will, will know that it's always going to be nine AM unless changed as opposed to the other way around. So, um, that's all, that's all there is to it.
Great, and this doesn't affect special town meeting, that would usually always start at seven.
That's correct, the, the evening meetings won't be affected by this and, and, um, they're not regulated as to time anyway in, in the bylaw, I don't, I don't believe, I, I'd have to look at that again, but I don't believe they are.
Interesting, okay, thank you. Um, yeah, hopefully that helps in getting, getting everything done in one day, so, um, now we're going to move on to the zoning bylaw amendments. And these all, I believe, require a two-thirds majority vote. Um, so we will first start with a Planning Board, Article Two, amend the zoning bylaw to regulate indoor and outdoor commercial recreation and winter commercial recreation in additional zoning districts and to establish a commercial restrict, res- recreation overlay district related to Kimball Farm and the Shova Valley Ski Area. So, um, is Dylan, I don't see anyone from the planning.
Laura, I've got this, uh, tonight, our Planning Board Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Jeff Morissette, Director of Land Use Management, so Article Nineteen proposes to amend the zoning bylaw to expand recreational opportunities in the commercial and industrial zoning districts. Currently, indoor and outdoor commercial recreation is only permitted within the commercial highway zoning district and with benefit of a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. This amendment would also potentially allow commercial recreation within the industrial highway, industrial A, industrial B, and industrial C zoning districts. However, it would still require a special permit, which is a discretionary permit that a board is not obligated to grant. It requires a supermajority vote or four out of five. And the board is permitted to impose reasonable conditions of approval to make sure that the proposed use is in harmony with the neighborhood. The second part of this article is to create a commercial recreation overlay district over the Kimball Farm and the Shoba Valley Ski Area properties. So within the overlay district, this amendment would also give the Planning Board the ability to approve additional accessory uses that they find support the overall commercial recreation use. Additional changes such as designating the Planning Board as a special permit granting authority are proposed that would significantly streamline the permitting process. And why are we proposing these amendments now? Well, first of all, uh, multiple surveys were conducted by the town over the last several years. Uh, some of you are probably familiar with those, uh, run by the Parks and Recreation Commission and more recently by the Land Use Management Department at last year's Strategic Planning Retreat. And in those surveys, they identified that many of our residents want to see more year-round commercial recreation opportunities. Additionally, both Kimball Farm and the Shoba Valley Ski Area have reached out to the Land Use Department to explore some of their long-term planning options, which includes permitting requirements. And for much of their respective properties, um, it's actually a prohibited use, so it's not allowed by our zoning bylaw, so it would require use variances, which is a challenging and uncertain permitting path to try to move things forward. And so just for a little background for those who may not know, uh, the Kimball Farm that we know today first began in nineteen thirty-nine when Jack Kimball and his wife Clara converted the family's woodshed into an ice cream parlor. And as you know, the Kimball Farm has expanded many times over many years and now includes a wide range of recreational amenities. And the Shoba Valley Ski Area opened for its first season back in nineteen sixty-four. The ski facility includes many other amenities such as the Outlook, the Tiki Bar, and some year-round programs. Westford is known far and wide for these two iconic businesses, which have been part of this community for many decades. And over the last twenty years, these two businesses have generated a combined um, tax revenue of three point three billion dollars for the town. So we think it's worth asking town meeting if they would support this zoning amendment to assist these businesses with their long-term planning efforts for a successful future. And some other boards have also offered, uh, their support to this amendment. Recently, the Select Board voted four zero to offer their support. And the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Economic Development Committee have offered their unanimous support for this proposal as well. So the full language and the Planning Board's written report is available on the town's website. We encourage anyone who has any questions to either reach out to me directly, the Town Planner, or the Assistant Planner with any questions. And we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. There, there are no questions, and I appreciate the history on the, uh, two properties, so, um, we will now move on to Article Twenty, which is a citizen's petition to amend the zoning bylaw to add seven Carl Thompson Road to the Residence A zoning district. I don't believe the petitioner is here, but I do note that it is not recommended by either the Select Board or the Planning Board. Um, is there anybody here who wants to tell us why or any additional information about this article?
I, okay, I guess I could chime in, uh, relative to the, the Planning Board if the petitioner is not here, Maria McCarthy.
I, I don't see Maria, I, I'm looking at the list of attendees, I do not see her, so.
So, uh, this was brought forth by citizens petition uh, because, uh, they are what would be a butters to a potential, uh, development proposal. Um, they had a number of concerns about the possible development. And so they filed a citizen's petition, um, to try to change the zoning of this one parcel, seven Carl Thompson Road uh, from the industrial A into the Residence A zoning district. And so while the Planning Board was sympathetic to, uh, concerns cited by the neighbors, uh, they were very hesitant to offer their support, uh, to rezone someone's property where the property owner objected and where they were seeking to do, uh, rights uh, allowed by that zoning district. And the Planning Board also noted that less than two years ago, I believe, there was a similar petition in the same area, uh, to rezone one parcel from, uh, Residence A to IA, so the exact opposite. So the Planning Board, uh, thought. So the planning board thought it would be best to look at this through the lens of a planning initiative and to try to see if there was a planning way to try to address some of the friction in this area. So I think the planning board at their public hearing actually offered and suggested to try to examine this as part of a planning study where it could come forward as a more holistic look rather than a single parcel at a time.
Thank you.
They voted their opposition in the select board similarly, for similar reasons, I believe, noted their lack of support at this time.
Okay, thank you. No, no questions, so we'll move right on to Article twenty-one. This is out, now we're no longer in the zoning. Articles were in the care and custody of town land section. So Article twenty-one is to transfer custody of a parcel on River Street from the school committee to the recreation commission, and I believe this is going to be dismissed. So I don't know that we have anything to say about it, so.
I can clarify for the board, the public. So after further research and reconsideration, it was determined that these parcels had already been transferred at a previous town meeting and the correct documents had been recorded, so there is not a need for this, again, as it has already occurred.
Huh, great, best kind of reason to dismiss. Article twenty-two is to accept Burn Place as a public way. That is on the consent agenda, so. Move on to Article twenty-three to ensure that the APR, which I believe is the agricultural protection restriction on Drew Garden property is enforced. This is brought by the Agricultural Commission. Is anyone, I'm seeing if Mark is here. I do not. Kristen, can you or somebody speak to this? I don't, or I don't see anyone else from the Agricultural Commission on the call, but.
I can speak very briefly about this, but would prefer most of the commentary to come from the Ad Commission at town meeting. They have petitioned for this article to be on the warrant to request that the select board take action related to the True Gardens agricultural preservation restriction and to set forth a sum of money to do such from free cash.
Ah, okay, well, we'll look forward to the details at town meeting for that. We did have a question come in to, oh, explain what action, okay, well, all right, two questions. We'll go the first one for, for this article. Does anyone give it, could anyone explain what the action that could be taken actually is? Is that something that anyone here could answer, or? Or even like a list of possibilities, I guess, of actions?
So I'm assuming this question is referring to Article twenty-three.
Yes.
I believe action is referring to working with the property owner further to enforce the agricultural preservation restriction, whether that be conversations with the owner, written letters requesting such, and even moving forward so much as to legal proceedings. But again, I do not want to speak for the Agricultural Commission as this is their warrant article. So those are the items that I would perceive as could be potential actions.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds like a good question to bring up at, at town meeting. And then someone is asking a question about the CPC balance, but I think Dan is going to answer that via text.
I can speak to it too.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
So for the opening balance for the CPA, we have five million one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. After the, all the debt payments scheduled under the operating budget article under eleven and all the projects under Article eight, we have a remaining balance of two million six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And again, the CPA has a history of only using revenue from the previous year to fund projects. So we're projecting about three point two four million generated in revenue to add to that two point six million dollar balance. So starting next year, they should be up around five point nine million in revenue.
Great, thank you. Hope that answers the question that came in. And last but not least, we have Article twenty-four, which is a citizen's petition to authorize the select board to petition the general court for one additional Chapter one thirty-eight, Section fifteen alcohol beverages retail license to be exercised by NAB One-Stop Shop Incorporated located at sixty Brookside Road. And we do have the petitioner with us here, Matthew Farber. Who is very patiently to the end, so thank you, Matthew.
Thank you for having me this evening. So this is a pretty big step for us to petition for beer and wine. We've been in the town over twenty years. We're very committed to being in the town with some great customers. But the last couple of years with COVID, with inflation, the current economic situation, it's really kind of broadened, like, so the company name is NAB's One-Stop Shop. We want to truly encompass being able to, the customer coming to the store and getting, getting everything they need. So if they did want beer and wine, they could come here and get everything at one stop. And I think that would really benefit the community, benefit us in bringing in much needed revenue. Also maybe hire some more staff, which I think would be great for the town. And then the other thing to talk about, I know underage sale is something always of a concern for parents, the community. We have a state-of-the-art point-of-sale system that we invested in a couple of years ago. And I can force an ID scan. We already do that for tobacco, electronic cigarettes, a bunch of different, you know, any kind of regulated product, even on lighters. We have an ID prompt that comes in and, for example, on the tobacco, you, we can't sell you, we can't move to the next step until the ID is physically scanned. So I think that's just an important part and it gets us ready to have beer and wine. So I'm hoping for everyone's support. It's been a long night so far, so I keep it short. Thank you for your support. If there's any questions, if you have an answer.
Thank you. And note that the select board is recommending this unanimously. I don't see any questions on it, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I would, that wraps it up for us. I would love, I would really like to thank all of the town officials, the committee members for participating tonight. I know it's, it's outside of your normal day, but it really is so valuable to get this information from you. I'd like to thank Westford Cat for recording it. And also thank you to the voters for attending and participating in the most democratic form of government, town meeting. So reminder to see you on Saturday, March twenty-fifth at ten AM at the main gym of Westford Academy. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.